We're live.
Okay Keith, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, welcome everyone to the town of Benton Planning Commission work session on November the 19th. I'd like to call this meeting to order if needed, if you please call the roll.
Commissioner Benninger.
Here.
Commissioner Braxton.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Lyles.
Here.
So we do have a forum, Mr. Chairman of the Planning Commission. So and we also have staff at this meeting. My staff Anita McMillan, Nathan McClung, Julie Tucci, Susan Johnson. I'm not sure whether Jacomo Montori is in the meeting at the moment.
Nina, I believe he's actually going to be joined at seven for the public hearing.
Thank you. So. So. I would like to confirm that our meeting is being held in accordance with town ordinance number 1016 and section four dash 0.01 G of chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of the Virginia General Assembly. And everyone present is participating by electoral means. Chairman Lyles, the meeting is now yours.
Thank you Anita. First, I'd like to start off with introductions. I thought what we would do, I know we have some new members, what we would do is just go around the video real quick and state your name and maybe how long you've been on the planning commission. We know that we have two new members, but just so you all know how long we've been serving on the planning commission to give you kind of a sense of how much fun this is and how long you'll stay on it, especially when you get to Mr. Jones. I'm Keith Lyles, I serve as the chairman of the planning commission and I've been on it for going on, I think, six and a half years now. Something like that. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Dave Jones. I don't know when I started. I guess it was 15 or 20 years ago, so. You're on it till death.
Mr. Benninger.
Yeah, I've been on three or four years now, I guess. And prior to that, I was on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Great. And I'll introduce Mr. Ty Braxton. Ty, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, just real brief? And what interests you in the planning commission?
Well, I've been living in Benton off and on for about 13 years. I was in the military, so I was in and out constantly, but now that I have a family, I have three boys. One was just born in May and then I guess I was, I joined the commission in June or July. So I'm, I'm pretty new, so I just wanted to be able to help with any decision making, especially since I got a family growing up in Benton.
Great. Mr. Reed.
Hi, I'm Sarah Reed and this is my very first planning commission. I'm happy to be here. I've, I grew up in Benton, moved away and then came back about, oh, six years ago or so and just have an interest in place making and interest in how the town, the direction of the town and the future of the town. So thanks for having me.
Very welcome. We appreciate you all joining the commission. Anita, if we could get a briefing from staff on what we'll be talking about tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to refer the matter to Mr. McClung, he's been handling the the application and the, you know, the staff report, so I would like to defer the matter to Mr. McClung.
Great. So I was, members of the commission, so to start the staff report. Tonight, we're going to be going over a request for a proposed commercial indoor amusement use. Specifically in this case is an arcade use for the New York Pizza building. It's a 700 Hardy Road. You probably are all familiar with where this is located, but I'm going to share my screen. Just so y'all have a general idea of where it's located and the surrounding zoning uses. The reason why this requires a special use permit is in our ordinance, when you have an arcade use, that's not accessory, you know, it's not just a few machines in a restaurant that are accessory to the restaurant use, but when you actually are planning on having a full-scale arcade establishment that requires a special use permit and keeping in mind the planning commissions allowed to suggest conditions, which we'll get to later. And those conditions are passed on to the town council during their final public hearing. Just an analysis of the building, it's a vacant building, it's previously a dry cleaning establishment. In 2016, they had site plans that were approved by the, by both our department and the Vernon County Office of Community Development. And also for the drive-through facility, which would, which was proposing to convert that vacant space into just like ice cream and coffee shop with the drive-through and you can see right here, the concrete has been poured for that, those drive-through facilities. Since then, in 2017, they had a building plans that were approved for those uses. And but they weren't material, they did nothing materialize from this, the approval of those plans. Since then, Mr. Jacomo Montori with the New York Pizza Restaurant, he's representing them in this case. They now want to expand it to be more than just coffee and ice cream, they also want it to be an arcade as well, which requires a special use. In order for it to be an arcade, according to the building commissioner, will have to go through the change of use process, which typically requires, in this case would require a registered design professional, like an architect or engineer, to analyze the building in order to incorporate the functions that allow it to be in that building code type. And if you look at the lot, most of it's impervious space. The existing parking, of course, serves the restaurant at 708 Hardy next door. And as was mentioned, actually during the town council briefing earlier this week, they're intending that it's arcade to be under the umbrella of New York Pizza Restaurant. So it's not going to be its own standalone arcade, it's going to be used to serve the patrons of the restaurant and patrons as well that are just going slowly to the arcade, but it's still going to be under the New York Pizza Restaurant umbrella. It's not going to be its own separate business entity. Adjacent land uses, you can see northeast, it's zoned R3, but it's, there's like a vineyard and agricultural use there. And then south of it, of course, the right away and east of it is the other restaurants along Restaurant Row in the town of Benton. Overall, staff find it, both with the Hardy Road corridor and the intent of the GB district. It is consistent with the characteristics and the intentions and the future land use recommendation for the comp plan. But one thing we would like to bring up, and this is what I'll say before opening the floor for conversation and after showing just the space from the previous building plans, is that staff are recommending. You may have seen them in various convenience stores and tobacco shops, gas stations and other places of the like and restaurants. The skill games, they're usually Queen of Virginia is the largest one currently, the current, largest current vendor in Virginia. But one thing that we recommend is staff to condition to ensure that this remains a family arcade. And the Montori family and Jacomo has indicated to me, they want this to be a family oriented arcade. But to disallow any kind of skill games or gambling devices to be allowed to exist within that. And except that their intentions would for it to be a family arcade. And one unique aspect of the arcade is that rather than having like a staff members go through and have to work upfront to do the prizes, they're planning for it to be completely automated. So they'll use cards or like Dave and Buster's. But when you go to get your prizes, they will actually just have a humongous vending machine that you can just swipe and grab what gifts and stuff they want, but it's unique, I haven't seen anything like that. At least in the state of Virginia. Beyond that, I also wanted to show you the previously approved building plans for the coffee and ice cream dining area or the use for the drive-through. And a meeting I had with Mr. Montori, he indicated that this existing or this proposed seating area and dining area would be where the arcade use would exist. So you're looking at between 1,200 and 1,700 square feet for the arcade use. But any of your questions, that is what I have, and this opens the floor for any conversation we might have about this.
Yeah, do we have any comments from commissioners or staff? Questions?
How many, how many parking spaces are they going to be required to have?
Since, since this is an existing building, the park is, and since this is a approved site plan. Well, they'll have to have, potentially have another site plan for the, to add it to the arcade. But since it's an existing building, existing impervious space. I don't know if they're going to be required to have any, any additional parking spaces, at least according to the ordinance, is that correct Anita?
But when you go to go by there right now, the space in front of the, the old dry cleaners is filled up with the parking from New York Pizza usually.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the site plan was approved for the ice cream and a coffee coffee store and a drive-through. Having said that, since the proposed use is being for, for the commercial indoor amusement center will require change of use. So staff can ask for additional parking on that already existing pavement to be, basically, they have to make sure that those pavement need to be designated as parking spaces. We can require that for those to make sure that they will repaint it because right now it just cannot open paved area. So apart of the change of use requirement, we can ask that they designate those paved area as the off-street parking requirement.
Do they have any requirements for stormwater runoff?
No, sir, because like we mentioned, the site plan was approved in 2015. And since majority of the site is already paved, so Roanoke County does not require the stormwater requirement. Since the, the previous area that was disturbed is less than an acre and the existing area hasn't been paved. So they were not required to provide stormwater.
Have you heard much, have you heard anything from neighbors or that, that? Yeah or nay?
We, so we actually, when we put out the advertisement, we, you know, they could contact either me or Susan Johnson, town clerk, and we actually received no comments beforehand concerning this development.
This is an old one, this one was this one was on the books when I first started, so this is this has been sitting there for a long, long time.
Yeah, just, I mean, just to add to Nathan's comment, a joining property owners were notified by a first-class mail and they were to, they are to sign posted on the property and the legal notice have, were advertised in the Miss Benton Messenger. But as far as I know, that we did not get any call or request to attend the public hearing this evening.
Nathan, are they going to actually connect the two buildings? Have a hallway or something going to, or you can go from New York Pizza into the, the arcade area?
When I talked to, when I talked to Mr. Montori, he was saying that this, if you can see my screen, they're going to use this existing breezeway area or this patio area. There's a door on this side where they can enter, so there will be a way to get from the restaurant to the patio area to direct access to the arcade. So yes, they are going to, they're not going to be developing a breezeway, but that patio covering will most likely serve as a breezeway to get from the restaurant to the arcade use.
Well, there's a, there's a door there at the restaurant, you can see that white piece on the top. That door is right about there. Where that large piece is in it.
Yeah, I'll put this to street view.
Then you can also show them the building plan that was approved then in 2015, that was approved by Roanoke County Building Commissioner. And then show them that too.
Yeah, were you all able to see that when I shared it earlier or do I need to change my shared screen?
It never showed up earlier, Nathan.
Okay, let me pull it up again real quick. There you go, sorry about that. So here's the, the approved building plans, this is the building plans that were approved in 2017 for the coffee and ice cream area. And the red line I drew here shows what area they're intending to use for the arcade space. They still want to have the drive-through and ice cream. Just like quick serve ice cream out of like, you know, large containers. And I potentially coffee, but now they're, you know, they're intending to space to be utilized more towards arcade machines and maybe a few tables near the seating area to serve patrons.
Are they, are they intending to move the machines that they have in right-hand side of the New York Pizza now over to this building? Are they going to have both?
Well, I don't believe so, because um, there, there, like I said, there are skill-based, there's, there are some skill games over on that portion of the building, those wouldn't be able to move if we, if we've, you know, approved that condition that you can't have skill games or gambling devices in this arcade area. But I think what they're intending for this is to be more ticket driven, where you can actually attain tickets to redeem for prizes, more so than like a claw machine where you get an instant prize or, you know. I'm sure they'll have some games just for entertainment, but I think, like I said, they want it to be more like Chuck E. Cheese or Dave and Buster's.
Myrtle Beach, Ty.
Yeah.
Hey, hey Nathan, back to the skill games. What, so putting conditions on this, I mean, what, what legal action? How, how can we legally do that and not do it at a first aid convenience store or, or somewhere like that, that, you know, that says, I mean, I don't know why they have them and someone else couldn't have them, so, you know. Not that I want them, but I mean, I don't want to do anything that's not, or recommend anything that's not, that's kind of unfair to a business owner. If these are legal machines to own in, in the state of Virginia. Why would we put a stipulation on something like that for this one establishment and not any other establishment in the town of Benton?
Yeah, so for, for that, that's a good question. So with the indoor amusement use definition in the ordinance, it's four or more coin-operated machines. So if a gas station or convenience store was to have more than four of those machines, then it actually would trigger a special use permit requirement. And thankfully, right now, in terms of like the general assemblies leaning towards us, that by July of 2021, they're going to outlaw all the machines anyway. They're moving in that direction, they decided to keep them live for another year for the tax revenue because of COVID-19. They saw, I guess they saw it was more of a benefit to keep them live for just a little longer and then ban them. But as of right now, like our current orange does, just allow for more, for more of these entertainment or amusement devices. And that's why the grocery store downtown Azteca de Oro, when they wanted to get those pool tables, they had to get a special use permit through the, through the planning commission and town council. So that's, I mean, that is a good question, but I think for this, because we're doing a special use permit, we have the ability to do the conditions, we wouldn't want this to turn into you know, like a miniature casino and, and New York Pizza definitely wants it to be family friendly, that's, they've confirmed that with me.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that they had any of those already at the other side. Did you say they had those skilled games on the other side where Dave was talking about?
Yeah, they had, I think they have one or two.
Okay. So if they wanted to, let's just say, they could put up to four over there in that side legally, right? Or in the, in this special use permit, if we make that stipulation, are they going to have to remove those two machines that they have over there on the right-hand side or in the restaurant area?
No, because it's on a separate parcel and this would be, yeah, since it's on its own separate parcel and, and it would be a different use category, a different primary use, then they wouldn't be required to remove those existing ones on the right, right side of the building.
Okay, they just wouldn't be able to put them in the, the new establishment. Okay, thank you.
How are we going to, how are you suggesting we have them agree to this?
We're going to make a, we make a recommendation. And then you all, as the planning commission tonight, before, you know, you vote, you can impose that condition. I actually talked to our attorneys earlier and drafted some language that we can include in the proposed ordinance that would disallow for those type of skill games or gambling devices in this, on this property. And I did make it clear to New York Pizza that because special use permits run with the land, that's why we're wanting to impose this condition. We trust that they want to do a family-style restaurant, but since special use permits stay with the property, we want to ensure that it would never become something that wasn't permitted to.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and Nathan, I know that I, you know, emailed you earlier, I apologize for being late. The other condition that we may want to add, because the building commissioner is requiring the change of use for the amusement center. So the other condition that we can add is before this space can be used as an indoor amusement center, the change of use has to be approved, then, you know, the petition have to obtain approval by the building commissioner. So I mean, as far as the ice cream and the coffee shop, they don't require that, but then for the amusement center itself, require change of use when Nathan contacted the building commissioner.
Okay.
Jacomo on this. He, he, his primary reason for this is the arcade. I told him that it would be cool to have an ice cream or a coffee shop. Because like me with kids, my kids can go play, I can eat some pizza, have like a little time with my wife, not the kids, you know, mommy, daddy. But since I brought the ice cream and coffee thing up to him, he's been thinking about it for a while now and he's just bringing that in now. But this, the pri, he said the primary use for this is strictly the arcade, but the ice cream and the coffee would be a bonus.
Yeah, I know originally it was, well, it's been a few different things when Benny was around and things like that. Originally it was going to be just ice cream and coffee. Like it was, the ice cream was over where Dave was talking about before, years ago and got rid of it. But now, yeah, when I talked to Jacomo, he explained to me about how it's going to be like, kind of like a Dave and Buster's, like Nathan was saying, where you, it's really going to be a hands-off operation, it's really all automated, so really no attendance there or anything, it's just you, you put money on a card, you go play until that money is over or your winnings and you take your card and get your prizes. So it does sound like a, a pretty fun, family-oriented in and out, if they wanted to just do that only. So I think it'd be a good, good addition to the town and, you know, bring some family-oriented activities into Benton. Is there any other questions or comments from commissioners or staff? Okay, hearing nine, we, do we need a motion to adjourn the work session? Julie?
No.
No, okay. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, is it, I would adjourn the work session and begin the regular session.
Mr. Chairman, we do have five minutes since we advertised that the public hearing is going to be at seven. So we do have to wait until seven.
All right, so we can get a five-minute break?
Yes, sir.
And hopefully I get time for Jacomo to join as well.
Yeah, okay. And to convince.
Serious, Sarah and Ty, where, where do you live in town?
I live behind Kroger.
And I live behind the Exxon off Washington Avenue. Up on the hill.
Board, Board of Zoning Appeals guy is up there.
Matt. Oh, Nick.
Mick, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're up there with him then.
I am, yeah.
There's a lady that makes cakes up there.
I've seen her license plate, she's the cake lady, right?
Yeah.
I've never actually met her though.
Usually, usually big ones like a wedding cake or something like that or big, big stuff.
Yeah, I've never caught her outside, but I see her car every day when I walk my dog, so.
Anne Smith.
Okay.
Well, welcome to have the two. What happened to Mr. Booth?
Oh.
Appointment, he's, the appointment was expired, so. And since we do have applicants, the council decided to appoint Ms. Reed to replace the booth.
I don't know where I live, I have to drive by this house with these huge bushes. I don't know what that guy's thinking.
He wasn't, he wasn't thinking a whole lot, the lady that built this house in 1944, around 1951, she decided she wanted a little privacy and planted those bushes.
Yeah.
And then the town came along and planted the road in front of the bushes.
How dare they?
I know, so, yes, I've gotten slack over those wishes since I'm. And, you know, I said I will cut them down if we can guarantee nobody will throw all their litter in my trash. But I mean, there are trash in my yard when they crest the hill there. It catches all the trash and I go clean them out daily, so. I do need to cut them back though, so people can see around the corner. Well, that's why there is a mirror there though.
Yeah, there's a mirror, that mirror works just fine.
Yeah, but they are getting a little bushy out front, I gotta, I always try to trim around the corner there, at least so you can see a little bit.
What else is going on in town? You got a lot of building going on.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of things happening. You know, the parking lot at Vineyard Station is being poured, that looks really good, the patio is coming, coming to fruition on you know, on the Joe Goodpie side, it looks, it looks like the windows in Vineyard Station are getting ready to be installed. And then I hear there's a lot of excitement, a new, a lot of that Dale has some, some new and exciting things coming to the Kundif drugstore, so more to come on that. I don't know any of the particulars, but that's what Pete was telling us the other day, that there's been some deals worked out for redoing something with Kundifs to fit in with Vineyard Station, so. That'll be exciting. And then the new, two new patios for Farmagea and the Dogwood, that's going to be a really, especially during this time, you know, with the pandemic and all, you know, outdoor dining has really taken off. So that'll be a really good addition to our downtown area too, one coming into downtown and one right in the dead smack middle of downtown. So hopefully we'll see a lot of activity and walkability around downtown here soon.
Wow, and you've got two two new restaurants also down there, the Fat Boy or
Oh, yeah, we're, Ghiradello, Ghiradelli's used to be.
Yeah, and then there's another one down down there at the Exxon across from it.
Yeah, hey, it looks like it's seven o'clock and it's time to start the regular session. So I would like to open up the regular session and move immediately to our first item, which would be the consent agenda and consideration of approval of the amendments of quite a few work sessions and public hearings that we've held over the course of a year and a half, it looks like. The work session and public hearing for August the 2nd of 2018, the work session for January 15th, March the 7th, April the 11th, June the 7th, October the 4th and November the 14th of 2019. If we could get a motion to approve those, if anyone's had a chance to go over those.
I've read through most of it, I'd make a motion, we approve them as written.
Second that.
Great. Anita, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Benninger.
Yes.
Commissioner Braxton. Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Lyles.
Yes. All right, so consideration of that has been approved. We'll move into the public hearing to receive the comments. We want to announce this is a public hearing and ask for the report from staff one more time. We want to announce this is a public hearing and ask for the report from staff one more time. So we are in now in a public hearing. And then we will follow with the bullet points. This is.
Okay, Keith, it'd be good to introduce Mr. Montori.
Oh, yes. I do see Mr. Jacomo Montori has joined our meeting.
How are you Keith?
I'm good. Jacomo, good to see you. Thanks for joining and had an opportunity to meet with the folks here on our planning commission. I'll run down real fast. Our commissioners is Vice Chairman Dave Jones, Commissioner Sarah Reed, Commissioner Todd Braxton, and Commissioner Bob Billinger is on this Zoom meeting as well, along with staff. So welcome, Jacomo. Thanks for joining. I will get into let the staff do the same report that we had in our work session, and I think I'll turn it over to you, Nathan.
Hey Keith, yeah, so the staff report, just to mention, will be a part of the permanent record if you need access to it in the future, if you're listening in. So just the nature of the request, Mr. Jacomo Montori is authorized agent of T and J Investments of Roanoke and the New York Pizza Restaurant. They're requesting a special use permit for the proposed commercial indoor amusement use, and that would be, in this case, an arcade. You may be wondering the reason for a special use permit for, in this case, the zoning ordinance requires anytime there's more than four amusement devices that a special use permit would be required because it constitutes this indoor amusement use. And that includes coin operated amusement or entertainment devices such as video games, involved machines, games of scoring and pool, billiard table, whether or not they're coin operated. But just a brief history on this building, it's currently a vacant building that was previously used as a dry cleaning establishment. Site plans were approved in 2016 for an ice cream and coffee shop with a drive through. But since then, the New York Pizza Restaurant, represented by Jacomo Montori, has approached the town to press a special use permit. And based on the building commissioner's review of the, of the youth, current use to the proposed use, and also going from the approved site plan and building plans to allow for the arcade use, a change of use will be required for this building by the building commissioner. And currently the building is, it's a vacant building and there's parking areas that are used for the restaurant. The structure is about thirty-two hundred square feet total, and I'll share my screen to show once again that the that based on the prior building plans, these are approved by 2017, but this is only for the coffee and ice cream use. Of course, they're going to need to incorporate changes to allow for the arcade use, but that red highlighted area on the screen shows exactly where they're intending to have the amusement use. Based on conversations, staff do recommend two conditions for this use. The first condition would be for this, I mean, the first condition being that with the rise in games of skill and gambling devices in, in the state of Virginia. We intend this, and I know that Mr. Montori also intends for this to be a family friendly restaurant or a family friendly arcade. So one of the conditions we recommend is to disallow for gains of skill based on the Virginia State Code and gambling devices to be located in this area in this building. And then also additionally, we want the condition that the change of use process according to the Virginia State Building Code take place before it can proceed to become a amusement center. But that's a quick synopsis of the staff report, and any of your questions, that's all I have right now.
Great. Do we have anything for, from, any comments from, from Jacomo or from the public?
No, everything seems good.
Okay, Anita or Nathan, did we receive any public comments concerning this?
No, sir. No public comments were received before this meeting.
Okay. Any commissioners or staff, any questions or discussions for now? I know we had some in our work session, but now that we have Jacomo joining us in this meeting, is, do you have any questions for the petitioner, Jacomo Montori?
Um, no, not real, no.
No question. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Jacomo?
Sounds pretty straightforward for what he's trying to do, that it'll, and we'll get a building being used again, which is set there for too many years empty to get some good use in.
I think so. It's a historical building, so might as well just use it for something. More for the kids.
Mr. Montori, the, you're going to target the younger kids, I guess, with the arcade rather than, and so there wouldn't be any skill games included.
No, there will, there will not be, no, there will not be any skill games. Just arcades like Chuck E. Cheese, Dave and Buster, stuff like that. But again.
Great. With no further questions or discussions, I'll close the public hearing. And we will move into the action of petition for the special use. There's a that being said, a motion to deny or approve?
I'll make a motion that the special use permit be, be approved with the provision that no skill games will be allowed in the arcade.
No, there won't be.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, there are two condition that was mentioned by Mr. McClung earlier. So if Mr. Beninja would like to amend his motion to mention the two conditions.
Yeah, that'd be fine. That the arcade can be established until the change of use has been approved by the county building commissioner.
Okay.
Was there another one?
No, there's.
Okay. Great. And I think Ty seconded that. You need him to second that again, Anita.
Okay, Commissioner Beninja?
Yes.
Commissioner Braxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Lyles?
Yes. Great. So it has been approved through the planning commission through, with those two recommendations or amendments. And Jacomo, again, we appreciate you joining the public hearing with us. You're more than welcome to stay. We're going to move on to our, our next item on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Jacomo, this is just a recommendation for the planning commission. Town council have the final say whether they will approve or deny your request. And that will be heard on December 1st, 2020 via Zoom meeting at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
We'll see you there, Jacomo.
All right. Thank you guys. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
All right.
Great. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the overview of the survey results for the zoning and subdivision, or the zoning and subdivision ordinance updates. I'd like to ask staff if they will proceed with the survey results.
Yes, so you may know with the current process that we've been working on over the past year and a half or almost two years now with updating the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. In order to collect public feedback, we developed a survey on Google Forms, and we had it advertised in the Vinton Messenger. Well, Debbie Adams did a nice article on, on intended provisions to the zoning ordinance. And then she also put the link on there as well. We also did a social media campaign. The turnout was better for some uses, I think were more popular than other ones. People are more passionate about signs and home stays than they are about, you know, dimensions and building heights and stuff, which is indicative of the survey results. But I did send the memorandum, and I thought tonight that we would just go and hit the high points for maybe some of the results that were, you know, involve more conversation. So I'm going to just pull up the memorandum that you all had in your agenda package on this Zoom call. And then I made some notes for things that we want to discuss with you all to probably would assist in the conversation with all the things that are going on, all the things that are, are being recommended. Of course, there's the whole zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance are going to be seeing changes. It's in entirety. So much so that the entire zoning ordinance as it is now will wholesale be revised and, and it won't be just a single amendment. It'll be an entire resubmission to zoning ordinance. So the six major topic areas that we did surveys on were signs, ADUs, home stays, like Airbnb and VRBO and other ones, off-street parking regulations, the mission revisions, and also new and revised use regulations. So I'm going to go ahead and share my window here. And go to the top. So the first thing I want to talk about tonight, do y'all see the PDF?
Yes.
The, the first few results you'll see are just demographical. I'll skip over those quickly and you can go back through and see whether or not who was answering was a town resident, how long they lived here and other matters. But the first topic of conversation is for signs. And the first section that we want to discuss is exempted signs. And so these will be signs that are exempted from having to come and get a sign permit. That doesn't mean they don't have to follow any of the rules. Those rules imposed were with all these signs. But this just means that you don't have to get a permit in order to do this. And just a background, in 20, I believe it was 2016, Supreme Court made a huge ruling and changed sign ordinances in every single locality in the entire United States. The big thing is the emphasis on free speech. And so some of the biggest changes that you'll see are things that we actually have, have to do, but there we have freedom within those, those limits to impose restrictions that will protect, you know, the life property and just the all around safety of individuals in the town of Benton. And the big emphasis, emphasis was on freedom of speech. And if you want to read more about that, it's the Supreme Court with the town of Gilbert versus Reed, which was a church in Arizona. So first thing I want to discuss were the exempted categories. And you can see that some had more than, than others, or in terms of votes for what they would intend to be exempted or not. One premise directional signs, those are signs that you see, you know, when you're turning to a restaurant and says entrance or exit. They would have a height requirement and square footage requirement. It seemed that most people were okay with those being exempted. MUTCD, those are actually just, you know, signs that the town of Benton beat up, puts out. There's a road safety signs like road closed, bridge closed, slow down, there's a flagger ahead. The wall graphic signs are like murals and things that are artistic in nature, going back to the freedom of speech that wouldn't be regulated. Window covers had a low vote, but I think the main reason for that is maybe individuals didn't understand what the window covers were, but those are like those, those materials, sometimes they use tarps or brown paper to cover up when a building's going through a construction phase or it's completely vacant. And you'll see that in the zoning ordinance, we currently, you know, limit the maximum amount of window area to 25% of, that could be covered by signs. And so in this case, window covers will be exempted because they cover 100%. You can see window covers are just different parts in town that may or going through renovations. Open, close, signs, self-explanatory, and then of course, one person selected none of the above as well, or one of the, none of the above. The first major conversation piece would be flags. So in terms of freedom of speech, we can't regulate content anymore. Obscene speech, of course, isn't protected, but when it comes to flags, this is one of the most controversial subjects of the, the new changes to the sign ordinance nationwide. But you can't regulate the content of signs, but you can regulate the number and the square footage. So the first question that individuals had to answer were, first, do you agree with a maximum number? Like the staff recommended maximum of three per lot at 24 square feet. Fifty-four and a half percent of the individuals who voted said that they agree, and you can see the results on the page in front of you. Some, each, and most of all of these questions on the survey, people were allowed to give additional comments where they just typed, you know, what they wanted. And of course, everyone's identity was protected. All these comments are anonymous, but I think it is still important to go over what individuals said. So here are the percentages of just, you know, the agree to disagree neutral. And most of the questions these servers follow this format. But you can see the first two comments that people placed. This one relating to the number, if we need to reduce it from three to two, and if 24 square feet is too much, 20 square feet, that was their recommendation. And then, I mean, you could read the comment that people didn't want to sign or flag of a particular type. And whether you agree or disagree with, with their comment, I'm actually glad they, they posted this because it actually completely contradicts what the sign ordinance, at least with the Supreme Court recommending, is going for. The idea is that you can't regulate content. So really, as long as it's not obscene speech, people can fly any flag they want in the town of Benton. But I just wanted to open the floor if you, in terms of the number and the square footage and any other comments you may have.
Any comments from the commissioners on the flags? I'll start by just saying I'm fine with that as well. You know, you can't really tell people what to fly, not as long as it's not obscene. So a 24 square foot flag, would that be a six by four foot?
Yeah, that would be like the average, average size of a flag on a flagpole.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So would that mean Kroger has to take their flag down?
Do they have, oh, do they have a Kroger flag?
They have a US flag.
American flag that's probably 20 by 10.
That's a good question, because like I said, this, these are things that we're, you know, we're all exploring this together and we're trying to figure out things.
With, is, is there any way that Nathan, like to, to Mr. Jones's point there, like if I fly a flag in my front yard or in my business, normally I'm not going to put up a flagpole the size that Kroger has. Because of, you know, Kroger has a huge parking lot that can accommodate a flagpole that big to hold a sign, a flag of that size. Could there be some stipulations on that as far as, you know, the size of the lot that the flag is flying is how high, or how high it should be and how big it can be? You know, just thinking outside of the box there to, you know, we wouldn't want someone like to today's point putting up a, you know, a 20 by 10, three 20 by 10 flags in their business that's only the size of racetrack convenience store down here in Benton. You know, so just curious if there's, like, could we move in that direction to, you have to, I know, like, for certain things in the town, you can own certain things if you have over an acre of land and stuff like that. So just curious if those stipulations could be put into place as well, because I wouldn't want to see Kroger take down their big US flag and put up a very small one, eight, 80 feet up in the air and nobody could see it.
The chairman, in the past, this is something that we have to chat with the town attorney. In the past, we were informed that US flags, state flag are exempted. And as far as the height and the size of the, depending on the height of the pole, a building permit is required because they have to have a foundation to make sure that pole is safe. So that's how they regulate as far as the height of the pole and the size of the flag. So.
Okay, good. Thanks. I didn't know that. Of course, we've never really visited flags before. Okay, good. Thanks. I didn't know that. Of course, we've never really visited flags before.
Yeah, that's a, I would like to look into whether or not we could do a potential to split between residential and commercial. Or, you know, in this case, we did twenty-four square foot each for three. It could be, you do a max square footage. And a max, sorry.
And I'm, I'm not disagreeing. I'm not saying that Kroger needs to take their their flag down because it or, or like you say, the size of the property, it it fits it well. My my point was if you put, you know, that you can't have but twenty-four square feet, they're, they're out of compliance.
Yeah, I I think Anita cleared that up for us by saying that American flags um, and state flags are exempt.
Right.
But, yeah, but we do have to, yeah, we, but we do have to chat with the town attorney because um, like Nathan said, last year, Supreme Court basically, because of all the um, of all the ruling that we cannot, um, we cannot legislate the content of the sign if the flag is considered a sign. So we can check, but in the past, uh, I was told that state flag, US flag uh, exempted. But we, we're gonna make sure before we move forward with this amendment.
Yeah, something, something we can check into for sure.
Great.
Uh, the, the next section is covers prohibited signs. And what signs to prohibit. And this, this says, uh, do you agree that portable signs as defined by the fact sheet should be prohibited? So I'm going to pull up a picture because when you think portable, you know, you could think of tons of different sign types, but when we're talking about portable signs, we're talking about a specific definition of a portable sign. So in this case, a portable sign would not be an A-frame sign or a freestanding temporary sign. You see these particularly the freestanding temporary signs, you see them a lot. But what we're talking about portal signs, we're actually talking about signs that look like, like this. They're either, you know, pulled by trailer. Or, you know, usually they have changeable letters. Um, and they're typically larger. But just analyzing the statement of purposes for these regulations, these type of portable signs that you see on these pictures, they actually violate five, or they they conflict with five of the nine statements that we have for the purpose of these uh, sign regulations. But of course, the the definition is clear enough not to include these type of of sign titles, the A-frames and you know, one yard signs that you stick in the, in the ground. It would be some of these bulk, bulkier ones that are transported by trailer. Or ones that look like this in the picture on the left. You know, you can see that it was a little bit skewed higher to prohibit those. And individuals left comments about uh, both in favor and uh, not in favor, but uh, we can address any, if you have any questions about the comments that individuals left, I do want to be able to like, address them, especially if they're posed in the form of a question.
We did have one of those signs at the Valley Hall for a while. And they put it on concrete block so that they, and then they said, well, that's not a portable sign. But it was, it was a portable sign just permanently mounted. And it disappeared after a while.
Again, and that's what happens, uh, Dave. Usually, usually they, those type of signs, they, they start out as being temporary, but then someone puts a foundation on them or, you know, that, and then it changes it to be a more permanent nature. And then another thing, a topic of discussion for this is um, one thing to keep in mind with the zoning ordinance is, all the permanent signs are grandfathered in when, you know, when a zoning ordinance changes, temporary signs actually have ninety days to comply with the new regulation. So temporary signs are not going to be grandfathered in. They're gonna have a ninety-day grace period, but then they're gonna have to be either altered to conform or removed uh, from the properties.
And do we have a lot of businesses around the town that uses these temporary signs?
Uh, not too many just driving around. I don't, I don't believe many use it anymore.
Other than what Dave said, I don't remember seeing too many of them either.
No, there was something in here that you had about, and I must have missed it, about a sign on for Billy Bob Apartments.
Oh, yeah.
Really bird.
That, that was a comment someone left. Um, and I think that was more of a derogatory comment that someone was trying to like build a straw man to get their point across. But, you know, that comes uh, later in the, in this uh, overview of the comments.
Gotcha.
So the next topic would be, so some of these are just self-explanatory. You know, we wouldn't, we don't allow for off-site anyway, but this kind of gets to, drives the point across more that a sign can't be on a vacant lot, unless the lot for sale or leased, but you can't advertise off, off-site. This is another thing that we could potentially discuss is, is just like I said, everything we go over tonight, nothing's set in stone. We, you know, we want you all to be able to give it for feedback and for this to be, you know, the zoning arts at the planning commission and town council. But this would potentially prohibit individuals from like carrying or like sign flippers and other things like that. We don't have that problem too much in Benton, but it does pose a, like a public safety risk, especially when people are like on the right of way or other things. But it could be something where it really is someone's opportunity to make money. So it could be an issue. But in in addition to that, that has to do with actual people. But then we also have seen in other states, not so Virginia, not much so Virginia, but mannequin signs. And usually those are not really tasteful and they pose the same risk of distracting traffic as well. In terms of, you know, the sign ordinance.
And then, um, with the uh, the sign flippers and things like that, how is that any different than those big, tall, giant blow-up uh, you know, things that collapse and jump back up and collapse and jump back up on the side of the road? How is that any different than having one that that does that versus having someone stand there and flip a sign?
So, so those are actually already prohibited in our current ordinance. And those, those are carryover. The wacky inflatable to people and everything, but those are currently prohibited in the ordinance. Uh, anything that like besides a flag that like, you know, flutters in the wind and dances around like that. So the, this would be like a proposed change, but those are actually exist in, and its existence right now is prohibited by the sign ordinance.
Oh, so.
We're talking about the feather signs?
Temporary signs.
Wait, you repeat that? Sorry.
I said, I've seen those more so than I have the temporary signs that we were talking about earlier.
Yeah. Are, are you also talking about feather signs as well? The ones that are shaped like in, in the, like a feather shape?
Uh, but well, I was saying, what I was talking about was the ones that's got the, you know, it's the, the crazy tall character that, like I said, it inflates and drops and inflates and drops and um, like T-Mobile and things like that have them all over the place. So, um, so you know, I was just curious as to what the difference was in in those and and not really, because I had seen them, I didn't know that those were prohibited um, in our existing ordinances. Of course, you know, prohibited in our existing ordinances, our existing ordinances from nineteen ninety-five. I didn't know those things existed back then.
They're historical.
Well, Nathan, we talked about something when I came in for my um, orientation. Um, my concern with the signs is when you have high school kids or middle school kids or elementary school kids standing right on the road, holding signs, waving, I mean, that's just not, that's not, that's not safe. Like when they're doing car washes and stuff for a sports team or cheerleading team or, you know, whatever, but
It's a good point, because I, I don't know, I mean, if that would fall the same suit as this. Um, and it's, it's a, it's a great point.
Wouldn't that be a sign flipper?
Yeah, I mean, of course, it'd be for a different purpose, but yeah, it would fall in that category.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, um, to, to Ty's point, um, so, you know, going back to the sign flipper, and that's, like I said, that, to me, that promotes businesses and and also um, functions. We're a small town, you know? If, if William Byrd wants to do a car wash to raise money for the boosters club or whatever, um, and they can't promote it um, with, you know, the cheerleaders out in the, you know, holding up signs for a free car wash, donations accepted and all. We get, if we get into that pettiness, I guess you could say, um, we take the small-town home feel away from our town. Uh, you know, you can't do this and you can't do that. You can't promote um, school functions. Now, unless, you know, it's a school and, you know, that is exempt or or whatever, but, you know, then we get us, get into too many stipulations that again, I think takes away, away from our, you know, small hometown feel, i- in my opinion. I mean, that's, I'm just one commissioner here, but um, you know, I, when I was talking about the, the inflatables and all, I, what Ty just brought up did not even cross my mind. Now, you know, I do see the safety issues and all, but I do, I enjoy going by and blowing the horn at the, at the, you know, the Girl Scout selling the cookies and and doing the, you know, halt for cookies or whatever, you know? It just kind of makes me feel like I'm in my little hometown, you know, fun place, you know, that everybody knows everybody. Uh, so I think we're like, if that involves that, I think we're starting to get a little really um, down deep, if you will.
Yeah, my concern is just that close to the road. I don't care if they're dancing around the sun. Cause I agree with you. I think that is something that's very hometown feel, that that feel needs to be there, even for visitors, because they'll enjoy coming here, but um.
Yeah, but they're sign flippers.
Yeah, I mean, I've almost hit one. That's the reason I bring it up, because they were jumping, they tripped on the, like, they were right on the road and they tripped and fell into the road and luckily I stopped, but it happened.
Yeah, we, we'll bring up good points, because we gotta be, we have to be careful when we're writing these ordinances when we, we have one thing in mind, then it conflicts with another thing that is actually a positive and has a small-town feel. So definitely good points and has to probably go back to the drawing board and see, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's hard to write it to a specific case, for sure.
Yeah, and then when you start picking and choosing who can and can't do it, then you start infringing on other people's rights, I think, and and I don't know, to me, that one does need to be revisited um, and and looked at it from all different angles.
But one thing on this, you know, you take like for a car wash, that car wash is only going to last two or three hours and then that event's gone. You wouldn't set up three days ahead of time advertising for that car wash. You're only going to be there while it's going on. So th- there's no, no sign that's there for days and days.
Yeah, well, Dave, what we were talking about was like a, a sign flipper. Somebody, like I own a business downtown Roanoke, and I have someone standing at Vineyard Station with an arrow pointing to my sign and saying fifty percent off today. Um, you know, today only fifty percent off, you know, they're not there for weeks on end either, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They're just promoting that one day. So um, to me, those are kind of about the same thing. It's just we're saying a business can't do it, but yet um, maybe we say the schools can't do it then, or or, you know, any, so I think we get into a lot of, you know, why can they do it and why can't we do it? Um, when we talk about sign flippers is what I was talking about. And when I say that, I'm talking about the person that's, you know,
Liberty Pack Service.
Yeah. Yes.
Could it be written that the uh, sign flippers of schools associated with schools be a certain number of feet from the road?
Yes, that's just as a follow-up. When they do yacht sale and when they do those fundraising thing, they do have to get zoning permit with no charge. And we also mentioned to them that they're not supposed to be standing in the right of way, but it's so hard to enforce because like, you know, they say it's temporary, they don't knock there every day, you know, just one-time event. But it's something that, you know, it will become a safety issue. Uh, the police can enforce that because they're not supposed to be invite, advertising or be standing in the right of way. So.
I mean, if there's only one car wash going on in town, just to avoid all this stuff, like Keith was talking about, what if we had a police car there with them? I mean, that shows support from the town, it shows support for officers from the community. Just show, have one car out there just with the kids.
Yeah, I, I think, well, I think we get into a whole different ballgame there when you start talking about, um.
Yeah, I'm just throwing an idea out there.
Yeah, police supporting that and and uh, you know, the next thing we know, we're gonna have police supporting everything and and that costs the town a lot of money as far as just to have an officer um, stationary in one location to, to police say, uh, a car wash. I, I think that's a whole, you know, we start going down a whole different alley when we do that. Other than, you know, like Anita said, the police can police those areas if they're out in the median, to your point about being unsafe, um, move them off to the side uh, on a corner somewhere and not in the, in the right-ofways of the, the median strips. Good idea, but I just think, I don't know if that would fly into town and the police chief.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I was just throwing out brainstorming. That's all I'm doing.
I mean, sign is always, always a challenge. You can tell just by uh, uh, our discussion now. It's ever-changing. It's something that, you know, how you balance that. But we always get a complaint, we are too strict, and then on the flip side, we are too lenient. It's always, always, and it's very hard. It's a very contentious issue. So.
Yeah, um, you know, when, when I think of signs of, you know, I think of like our convenience stores throughout our town. And if you ride through our town and you'll see the convenience stores, and they have maybe two or three signs, I think it's what we allow or something like that of Pepsi and uh, or whatever, you know, your soft drinks and your, even, I think maybe now cigarette signs are maybe even outdated, but then you go into Roanoke County just past the skating rink or across the street from the skating rink, and that whole building has nothing but thirty-five signs stapled to it. That's one thing I would not want our town to look like. Um, although people still associate that with our town, technically, we know that that's not in the town of Benton, but um, I would not want to see our, all of our tobacco shops and our convenience stores and Kroger, for that matter, stapling up all their specials on the side of their building. And we have multiple signs. So I do like the sign ordinances, but today, I think to your point is, there's, there's hard to find a happy medium.
Correct. And we want to have a zoning ordinance that we can enforce since there's only one person, you know, as far as trying to enforce this. And then as far as the county, they're so widespread, they only enforce their so- sign ordinance based on complaint. So, you know, that's, that's always, and that you say, you know, people don't know where that jurisdiction uh, boundary stop, you know, they just assume East County. And in fact, uh, Southeast, um, they're just, that's in the town of Benton. Because how, you know, because it's hard to differentiate. And then you see, you know, like the liberty during tax season, and they're like, oh, that's in, you know, in the town, but technically it's not. So it's always, always that issue we have to face.
Yep. Sorry to delay you, Nathan.
Oh, no problem. This is a good segue to our next conversation. About uh, temporary sign revisions and enforcement. So one thing the staff would like to recommend is that we change the way we currently do enforcement. And here, and here's the, the main trade-off is that you're lenient in some areas, but then you heighten enforcement in other areas for like, it's a better balance. So you can see overwhelmingly people, or, you know, a large majority of people propose, are in favor of the proposed regulations, where we would not allow, we, we wouldn't require permits for temporary signs. So right now, someone comes in, they want to put up a banner to, you know, advertise a product at their place. It's about twenty dollars. It's for uh, twenty or twenty-one days. Then they get, and then they take it down, and they want to put up again that they come pay another twenty dollars, and they can only do it five times the entire year. But most, a lot of the counties are moving towards, and it makes a lot of sense just in terms of staff resources, is that you don't require permits for temporary signs, but you just enforce the guidelines that you already have in front of you. So there's no time limits, there's no frequency limits, but then everyone, every single use, whether it be a gas station, a restaurant, a grocery store, has to follow the set medium of what they're allowed. And we can get uh, I, I'll just, we'll show an example for um, what we're proposing. But uh, just on the front end, that, that would be the balance. And so we'll get back to that, but within those, you have all the rules like two temporary freestanding signs per lot. And then uh, for in terms of temporary Um, and then uh for in terms of temporary signs specifically. The business or the use, we get a set square footage, and then it gets just blown out where you can um. You get that square footage and you can break it down into what fits for you, so you may have one for like freestanding sign that says like now hiring. And then have um, you might have like an A-frame sign near the door, window signs, maybe a banner saying, you know, we sell these products here. Um, but it would be broken down into, you have this allowance, you can work with it and with different sign types and everything, as long as you stay with it. Uh, and. You know, you increase enforcement, so you ensure that everyone's on the same status quo when it comes to advertising, but. To aid in this conversation, we actually had a landscape architect to draw up um an example of someone maxing out what we allow. So what we're recommending is uh thirty-two square feet total sign area. And in fact, A-frames, A-frame sign square footage wouldn't count towards that, window signs wouldn't count towards that, so they would have thirty-two square feet to work with, with freestanding. Signs and banner signs um on the property, and so just to give an idea, here's a a clean slate of of a gas station. With no signs, if they were to max out what there would be allowed, uh this is the amount of of advertising they would have, so you have. Then using less than twenty-five percent of the windows, um you have an A-frame sign up front, two freestanding signs in the ground. And then you have a banner sign also on the, on the side of the building, so. And this is a gas station, they could actually have a small um fuel station uh topper on top of their gas stop as well, but. That's just an example of of what it would look like if someone maxed out what we're uh police proposing to set the maximum at thirty-two square feet. You can see someone suggested raise sixty-four square feet. Uh, stand size of a billboard is three hundred square feet, and then, of course, someone says allows, like Keith was saying earlier, too much sign leads to sign clutter. Uh, but. Personally, they said, just from our department in terms of enforcement. It's, it sounds contrary, but it actually would be easier to enforce the sign permit by removing the permitting process for the temporary signs. But I'm willing to hear y'all's, y'all's thoughts on, on this.
Um, do we know what the revenue is right now for um, I mean, I I would think that it's not that much um. Because I think that probably, probably more people go this route anyway than they do to come get a permit to put a sign up. Uh, a temporary sign anyway, so I'm sure that the, the revenue gains aren't that uh drastic or uh. For people, uh if we was to stop charging and just to uh go in this direction.
I would agree with that statement, yeah.
I like that.
And you can see the breakdown for the way people voted on this one. So. Next thing we're talking about is non-commercial speech signage, this has to do with residential properties. Um, so with this, this think political signs, religious signs, anything that's um not commercial. Uh, the best way to allow for people to express their opinions all year round. Um, would be to have a square footage cap and they can work within that, so they, you know, they could have a few signs that amount to twelve square feet in total. Um, so you're thinking four feet by three feet, but. Of course, see if people had comments, and then the second comment you could tell is potentially by someone who works in the advertising business, but. For this, we're, our residential areas, most of them are twenty-five miles an hour anyway, um because of our zoning regulations, but uh. Uh, Dave, this is the one you were talking about earlier with with Billy Bob, uh doesn't need to waste his political billboard up to the side of his garage, but um. So I think, I mean, think twelve square foot is the, that's twelve, twelve square feet is actually, I got that from the city of Roanoke, this is their current ordinance. Uh, section about non-commercial speech signage in residential areas, but it can always be increased if it need be.
I mean, that's the standard, like little stick in the ground, like you showed us earlier um. Sign, like at that awalas, it's those two frontage road signs that were stuck in the ground, that's basically twelve square feet, is that right? Or is it, it's a little bit there, it's like four by three?
Yeah, it's big, it's a lot bigger, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
By two.
Yeah.
But two or three of those small standard signs that we showed earlier would probably.
Right, okay.
Cool, okay, so. And then sign measurements, this is actually just more like technical when it gets to the shapes and everything, we're just trying to give people more. Leniency and more of an ability to maximize their sign area. Right now, we use like a square, rectangle, triangle with this, they could actually, pretty much they have um eight lines to to work with. And they could, it's it's hard to describe, actually, we'll just pull up a picture of what I'm talking about. Um. So in the past, you'd have to just use one rectangle for this one, but now you can use eight lines to. Kind of decrease and allot for more signage area, and these are for, this is would be for like permanent signs. And then individuals had comments about. You know, this actually could be uh pointing attention with the issue, you can see it's kind of the, but but after how long a business is vacant. Do they need to blot out their signs with, you know, black or white paint, or what's a freestanding sign? Or, you know, s- signs in the windows, and I guess the best thing would be the helado bar that uh was demolished and is gonna be the make a bottom top, they. They had that helado bar sign up for a long while, but if we had. A, you know, a rule about, you know, once something is inactive for a certain amount of time, they need to remove this, the signs, if it's not, if there's nothing there. Of course, some individuals thought it's be two years, one year, six months. Uh, the state code of Virginia, when it comes to non-conforming for other kind of uses, two, two years is usually the rule. But I think two years is actually quite a long time, we don't have to do two years, we could do as many months as we will or years as we want, but. Uh, thought six months was sufficient, if a business is down for six months, I don't know. Um, it changes a reopening, but maybe a year would be more. Uh, reasonable, moving to comments on this.
Other than this year, this, this, this year, that.
Yeah.
With COVID, but uh normally, if you're down six months, you're done.
Yeah, what is the reason for going for six months? Why that long?
I I've just seen other, other locales, like City of Norfolk, um Charlottesville, o- other ones use that as a rule of thumb, but. Yeah, I think, I think six months is just in, because it's not like a temporary downfall, like Dave was saying, it's usually means that things are are going south. But it it does, it adds to a lot of confusion, um. And also, in addition to this, you know, deteriorating in signs that are just falling apart would need to be removed as well, but that's already the current standard. But.
Yeah.
I mean, under our current um, under our current ordinance, zoning ordinance now, non-conforming use, they are given two years. Before they can, before they have to uh to remove it, so. We, I think that's under the state.
Yeah, I think uh six months or or maybe even a little longer, I think if you go down any more more than that, you know, um. Seasonal businesses come to mind with, to me, um, you know, you have a, let's just say a snow cone business in that has a. You know, they're not gonna be selling a lot of snow cones in the winter, they may close from October to April, um, you know, that would require them to remove their sign. Um, within the six months, so uh, you know, I I think uh it's six months to, I know that my cousin, you know. Would close and uh, you know, she had to remove her sign every time that she closed for six months, um, you know, or pay a fine, she'd be doing it and then opening right back up, so. Um, I I think you, you know, six months is uh to me is a little. Like, soon, because I could be trying to sell the business, it closed, I'm trying to sell it. And somebody may open it right back up under the same name or or anything like that, and they have to come in. Uh, however, I think two years is way too long uh for something to sit there, so. So what did the comments, any comments on this, this one here, Nathan? No?
Yeah, just, just one, six months is a short period of time, um, this is obviously from, from like a billboard or sign company. And they're, and they're talking about billboards in this case, about the.
I noticed that on this whole survey, there's between nine and eleven people. Are, did the same nine to eleven people answer every one of these questions, or are they all over the board?
Uh, there were, there was a group of like six individuals who did all of them, and then the rest, there was like a, you know. A variety of people that wanted, say they were passionate about a certain topic, they would answer, but. There was a core group of six people, but then the rest of them were kind of a mixed group of individuals.
Okay, thanks.
Then moving on from signs, we're gonna talk about um ADUs, accessory dwelling units. This is something we actually went over with uh the UDA and or the the consultants in the uh project or the management team that, you know, met in twenty eighteen. Um, overwhelmingly, people are in support of ADUs, but the the main question, this is like, this is the biggest question, especially with um. You know, the town event's goal of increasing homeownership and incentivizing more owner occupied units, was whether or not. These ADUs should be able to um be rented out or not, or would they have to be lived in by a family member? Or a caregiver, so that's like my first question is, just see y'all's opinions on, if we allow ADUs, you know, units above garages, basement apartments. Tiny homes in the, someone's backyard, should they be able to be rented or not?
Yes.
Why do them if you can't rent them? Why, why would you?
Right.
Money and do it?
Uh, yes, I mean, some people in an aging place, because retirement homes are getting more expensive, that's one reason why.
Right, but when they, so when that aging person passes away, just living there, so now that that property's obsolete for me now. Um, I can't do anything with it, because that person's passed away, but I'm understanding from what yours, or what this panel is saying. Um, and now I have to convert it back to a garage bonus room or something, um. Uh, you know, there's not, we discussed this before, there's not a lot of um. Land available in in Benton for anyone that wants to own some rental properties or 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 things like that. And I think we went down this road of, you know, this would be able to, um, number one, we get more people living in the town of Benton, because we are. You know, running out of land for for more people to move here, so uh I think this. These ADUs are usually temporary anyway, um, and who's gonna spend sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars for one of them? And then have to take it out um when that time comes that that person's no longer living in there, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Are we just talking about renting, or are we talking about? Like, it could be an Airbnb or something, like.
That's a, that's a good point, Ty, and and actually, it was a good segue to the the next uh section of discussion, but. Yeah, I mean, what do y'all think about the Airbnb homestay for?
I, I think we've discussed this in the past too, um, when we first started talking about these of, you know, they could be Airbnbs, um. You know, again, it's bringing people into our town, uh, you know, we are right here by the parkway, right here by the lake. Uh, you know, I've always said it, there's, you know, four ways to get to the lake, and we own two of them, there's three ways to get to the parkway, and we own one of them. So, um, why wouldn't we want some Airbnbs here, uh especially with the way that downtown is trying to entice people to. For us to be a go-to town, instead of a go-through town, we could be a little destination, so um if you didn't allow those, then. Again, we don't have a whole lot of places to rent for the night or the weekend or anything like that right now.
I think we're falling behind times, that's kind of, that's the way that people do now, and and we're, no, we can't do that. Well.
Yeah.
Let's move ahead.
Yeah, I would like to um just find out, you know, yes, if, you know, if the. Sentiment is to be able to rent this out, should the owner of the property also reset on the property?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good, now I'm glad to hear that, because, you know, we want trying to minimize property being turned into rental properties.
Yes, I I think that's a week, didn't we discuss that, I don't know, it's been so long, two years ago or or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, you know, that was one of the stipulations too, we didn't want someone to take a house and cut it up into apartments, that they had four ADUs out back, and now they have. An acre with fifteen residents living in it, yeah.
And they're not there.
Right.
Yes.
They live, they're in Key West.
They live in Charlotte.
Okay, good, I'm black, to hear that.
Yes.
Yeah, and I just scrolled down to a later question that we already talked about, does it, the dwelling should be required to be the primary residence of the house occupant? Or a host occupant, and most people agree that yes. On, on that question. And also the echo to set to uh sentiment that, you know, y'all were saying that it's overwhelmingly support thirteen responses, yes. They should allow them, and like you're saying, whether you allow them or not, uh, they're gonna happen, it's kind of inevitable.
Well, you may have some of that going on now, and we're just not aware of it.
That's what I think too, I think it's better to regulate it, and it's a great step forward.
Yeah, I'm an Airbnb, I'm an Airbnb user myself, and I occasionally go on the, to Roanoke and Benton. I don't see currently any rec- uh advertising Benton, but it's bound to happen eventually.
Hopefully, down by the mill here soon.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
It's in the plans, hopefully, you know.
Nathan, with the detached dwelling units, how, how would it be proposed they be served by water and sewer?
Uh, I'll get, let me, yeah, let me go back to ADUs that is brought up um. In the development standards question. And I'm gonna actually go to the, the fact sheet. An accessory building uh shall be not be separated meterly for for utilities, water, sewer, gas. Um, and going back to. The vote. On a. Development standards. Yeah, yeah, most people, if they did vote for that, it was, it was over half that voted that it should be uh recommended for. To not be separately metered for utilities.
Yeah.
I I do know that public works requires a double meter for like a duplex, but in this case, it would be an accessory dwelling unit, not like a, you know, whole entire other uh family dwelling. So I think it's a good, good recommendation to have.
They're not gonna be renting out all the time, thirty days out of the month, it may be a weekend here and there, so it would be hard to regulate that as far as.
Yeah, and with, and with the current way the meters were set up, when they, would they have to pay a minimum on that meter?
Right.
And if the, if it's being used as an Airbnb, try. If, if you did have a metered connection for that. Other building, that'd be a nightmare, you know, who's gonna pay the water bill?
Right.
Yeah, exactly, some accountability in that. I do know that we've, they said, some of these things are talking, we've talked about in the past, I'll, I'll get to, I'll, I'll move to points that, you know, are either new or. There's been like more development since, uh, in terms of Airbnb. I attended a few webinars uh recently, one by the ICMA, and one of the big conversations, what would, what should we do when there's complaints? And real complaints and how to prevent, you know, neighbors from just, they're upset because their neighbor has an Airbnb. Uh, the big recommendation we've had is just uh that to make sure that there are town, town code violations, and that they're actually like. Shown by a police report that are substantiated, but one recommendation or comment, someone's was thinking, I think Town of Blacksburg has this, is that. There should be an appeal and hearing process before suspension or cancellation, I don't know if y'all, how you feel about that, if it's just three strikes, you're out, or if there's like an appeal. And maybe they appeal to the town manager, and the town manager has to hear the evidence before him and make that decision, um, or town council. But that's one thing, when you have like a bad uh host, the the ways to, you know, there's gonna be registration system. They're gonna have to have a business license, pay the occupancy tax, um, and follow the rules of this ordinance, but then what's gonna happen when they break? rules in this ordinance or break town codes when it comes like noise and other violations? You can see some people are more lenient than others.
It comes down to fairness too. You, you've got to have a, somebody that you know, you got a neighbor that, hey, I don't want you to have this, just keeps bombarding the regulator with complaints. That's one thing. If you have another that, you know, the police show up there and they arrest people out of it, that's a total different situation. So.
An appeal process should be there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I think this is, then this kind of, I mean, it's along the same lines as any rental property and or really homeowner's property um that we, you know, is, do we treat one different than the other? I mean, because it's the same, somebody's the homeowner still um in this um and we're going to treat, does it matter if I have a uh ADU out back or I have a bunch of people in my backyard all the time, my neighbors are still going to complain and, you know, I think, I mean, I I get what we're saying as far as having them uh one in my backyard and not or not, but um, a complaint, we're gonna, the police is gonna go to, we kind of usually figure out if it's just a disgruntled neighbor or, you know, if there's actual complaints that there. You know, I I do like the appeal process, like Ty just said, that, you know, it, after a certain amount of time, and and I think we've done this in the past too. Dave, I think you are one that um, you know, that old plant you used to run down there that was all noisy all night long. You know, people complained about it and everything, and it was actually come down to one person all the time complaining about it. So um, you know, you're going to have those people, so.
Who was in the wrong district.
Right. So, you know, it's just, I I think we're always going to have complaints, but I do like the appeal process, that it it goes to a mediator or somebody that that really substantiates if it's a legitimate complaint or not.
I agree. Well, you know, if you, if you looked at complaints, look at Ruddle Road. You know, how many of those places on Ruddle Road, the police are over there all the time and if you know, you don't see them boarded up, the people's stuff sitting out in the street, so.
Yeah, speaking of complaints, real quick on a side note, just for Anita and Julie and Nathan, um, really, Ty, Sarah, you guys haven't experienced it yet, but I'm sure Dave and and Bob and myself, I know I'm hungry.
Yeah, this is killing me that we get these new restaurants and we, we haven't eaten anything in two years now.
I know, this is now, you know, I was waiting, I went out right before the meeting, the work session to see if my food was outside on the, on the um porch there, but it wasn't.
I had to stop at China Wall and pick up something to hold me over.
Mister Chairman, we, you know, it seems like we have a very good discussion. We can always, you know, have next um next Zoom meeting.
I was, I was just kidding that, you know, I was just letting Ty and Sarah know, usually when we meet in person, we always eat first and then we have our work session and but the Zoom meetings cut that out on us and uh we had to fend for ourselves tonight. That's something to look forward to. We all used to get, we get to break bread together before these meetings, so.
When we get back to normal, whatever that is.
Right. Sorry, Nate, I didn't mean to go down that road. I was just kidding with you.
I told Pete, the reason I joined the commission was we need a Chili's in Benton. I'm not going to rest until we have one.
Good luck. Put a, put a university here and you'll get one.
Yeah, that's right, or an airport.
So before we move on from a homestay and uh actually after homestay, I want to go down to newer revised use regulations because we've gone over the dimensional revisions and off-street parking regulations as a, as a, you know, planning commission in the past. These surveys were just to see, you know, from our conversations at those table after we broke bread, uh, to see what the public was you know, the public opinion, public outreach on what they, they feel about these things. But before we move on from homestay, there was some points in this, I mean, these are pretty crucial points, but um do you think there should be a set number of total days in a calendar year that they can rent out the place? And then coupled with that, the minimum contract period for a homestay is pretty standard, minimum twenty-four hour period. That's, that's not the the issue of controversy. It's fourteen days, a maximum stay of fourteen days for, you know, someone using Airbnb Airbnb or some other homestay app. So two things, should there be a number of rental days in a year and then it's fourteen days, should it be less or more? Um, the main reason for the the capital fourteen and it not being thirty, because if it's thirty, then you're kind of getting into just a typical rental renter situation. Um, and it's hard to differentiate between the the two, but there's, you know, there's room to fix all these days and square footages and everything without here. So he said, feel free to email or submit comments at any time if you're reading through this and you have questions or anything. But I guess these two things, it really depends on the nature of your town. Like Blacksburg has a total number of rental days cap in a calendar year.
What is it, you know?
Uh, I think so Blacksburg, it gets, it's pretty detailed. They have not only a total number of rental days cap for the whole calendar year, they have two different types of renting situations like option A and option B, uh, and depending on the, on the way it's set up, whether it be in someone's house while they're there or when they're gone, you can, you know, use my apartment, use my house or whatever. But I I believe it is, I'd have to look back at um that you might be able to find right here. Well, I can, I can look that up, but it's uh, I believe it's maybe a hundred and eighty days for one of the types.
That'd be a sublease.
Yeah.
I mean, so I guess what is the um, what is the, like, what's the difference in a homestay and a rental? Like, you know, if I want to rent, I'm moving and I want to rent my house out. I mean, and and I call it, is there different tax implications for the town or different fees that someone pays because of that or? I can't rent my house out for two years while I'm gone overseas for two years or?
Yeah, so so for short-term rentals, it's a, it's a different tax structure entirely. So short-term rentals, it would, they actually pay the same as a hotel tax, which is the lodging tax, seven percent. Um, if you were just to, to not use a platform and rent your house, there's no tax revenue. That's just, you you just are just renting it on a monthly basis and you set up your lease and everything, but short-term rentals are intended to be short-term commercial enterprises that acts like, you know, a bed and breakfast.
Okay, right, okay. So that's really what we're talking about with homestays. It's kind of like a bed and breakfast versus um, you know, when I think of homestay, I think someone's going to stay in my house until I tell them they got to move.
Yeah, I would, for this, for homestay, bed and breakfast, they're kind of like synonymous. It's just the um, the difference is that, I guess, the bed and breakfast, the whole building has to be accommodated for that use and this, you know, you're making a unit of your house or your whole house temporarily um, to be used by the, by your guests.
Do we have a lot of that going on right now in the town of Benton or are we probably, my guess would be, we don't know.
I I check periodically and there are no Airbnbs in Benton.
No, we don't, but we do have had email people requesting if, you know, we to, that they want to do that.
Yeah, and also a new, well, like an ESO also emails, people want ADUs and
Yeah.
And and typically it's not for income, usually it's for, say, they have a disabled son that they want to live close to home and they want to convert their uh garage to an apartment so they could live close by or um, you know, maybe they have an elderly mother that they want to stay, but they want some, some distance so they feel comfortable. Uh, not too many like requests about, hey, I want to make extra side income. Uh, and there's, there's not many grandfathered ADUs in in the town of Benton right now either. I know we're talking about homestays right now, but I also wanted to mention ADUs get requested from time to time as well.
Have we ever had the first person put one of those health units in?
No.
That the state made us get through all those hoops for?
Correct, but we have not had any so that I know of, so.
Right, I think it's a lot of, a lot of it that we know of. Um, so I got an ADU out back in my house and for my grandmother and she passes away, um, and now I want to rent it out. I mean, as a rental, is that, I mean, what do we call that?
I think we just call that, it's a normal, it would just be a rental unit. Yeah, and and basically, I just pulled up on the the survey. A lot of people want these to be rented, like at least on this one.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, I guess I'm getting that. So homestay and those dwellings and now rentals, I mean, I, there's a a fine line between all of them and it seems like the the number of nights you stay is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and and home, like I said, homestay has to do specifically with like those apps, like Airbnb, VRBO. It deals specifically with those. Um, I mean, there's more websites than those, but that's what we're dealing with specifically when it comes to the homestays, short, short, short-term rentals. Um, and I, and I could do the, do more research on, you know, whether, what's the max cap of of a stay and and everything because they are intended to be short-term and not, and not long-term. Just be like a vacation, if someone wanted to come to Benton and, you know, uh, do various activities around Benton in the valley, they would stay for like a week or two or.
Nathan, you get like, so there's a way, I mean, I guess so I understand this correctly, um, we would be notified that if someone is using a site to um put a homestay rental out there um, so we can charge an occupancy tax. Is that how that works? Um, I mean, how would you know if I'm using my old ADU as a homestay um in my backyard using the website, using a website?
So we would have to develop a registration program where um, it could be like a zoning permit in the same way as a zoning permit, kind of like we have a chicken ordinance and you have a chicken permit annually. We would have to have an annual uh permitting procedure where you pay a fee in annually on your own that list, but in the past, a lot of those websites were kind of underground and didn't want to work with local governments, but thankfully now most of them work directly with local governments too. Um, and it actually is easier for the host because they, they automatically uh calculate the taxes and fees uh when the person uh orders it and that the the way I've heard, at least from the town of Blacksburg, is they get a check from Airbnb or one of those sites, once a month, they get a check cut for all that lodging, but I think it became more, more and more transparent, but in the beginning it was really what, it really was kind of like the Wawa West and turns out it's everywhere, but it's gotten better, it's got a lot better.
How even even know? I mean, that's, so that that answers my question a little bit better. Thanks. That's why I've had so many is because I wonder how we even know if somebody's doing that, if somebody was in there for ten days, fourteen days or four years. But I I get it now. Thank you.
Yeah. But moving down to, we've, we've gone over, it seems the past, I want to cover this last subject area for the night. Um, that would be new and revised use regulations. Um, first, um, I found a definition called alternative financial institutions. These are like your payday lenders, car loan places, uh, it includes pawn shops and pawn brokers, precious metal dealers, you know. Uh, these are called, I found a definition from Chesapeake County that they call them alternative financial institutions. But the recommendation here, and I'll see what you would like to hear, and we, I mean, you can even recommend it even further, but they require a special use permit for these type of institutions in our downtown area, or you could actually outright prohibit them. Um, or by right, it's really up to you guys, but I don't know. And and lady, I would want to know what y'all think about um the potential to allow a, require SEP for these um, special use categories. And I'll pull, I'll pull up a more in-depth definition and we cover all of these.
So where are pawn shops allowed by right?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question.
Sorry. You repeat that? I missed it.
Where are pawn shops allowed by right now?
Uh, right now, every uh in CB, GB. And, yep.
So like, so I get the payday lenders, you know, they're, they're basically a, I don't know, a bank, if you will, that charges a lot of interest for car titles and things like that. Um, but like a pawn broker, pawn shops, I mean, people like to visit and shop at pawn shops as well. Um, I don't see a lot of people shopping at payday lenders um and and places like that. However, in a downtown area, um, I've seen, you know, pawn, to me, a pawn shop is nothing more than more like, kind of like a consignment shop. You know, you go there to to find a good deal, hopefully. Um, yeah, you're going to take some things in there if you're, if you need some money. Um, however, to me, just the pawn to those, it seems like a totally different um business to me because um, it's something for the consumer and it's something for the person in need versus the check cashing place, the motor title vehicle lender and the payday lenders all seem like, you know, for someone that's in more so in need. Um, but a pawn broker, don't we, I mean, isn't that a, an establishment that people actually shop in and and, you know, look for deals and things like that? So um, just curious as to why that's in the same category as the the other, um, you know, I get that they loan money for things, however, um more people go for to a pawn broker or a pawn shop um, to shop also than just to get a loan.
I agree with that.
And we've had.
There's a huge difference uh passing through a town seeing a pawn shop than a cash checking business or the title lender.
Yeah, and up top even the precious metals dealer. I mean, wouldn't that be a jeweler?
It could be.
Uh, right, um, I just, uh, some of these, I I get the payday lender, I get the title loan, I get that, that, you know, we don't um, I don't see that, I don't want that. My, my personal opinion, I wouldn't want to see a lot of those popping up into our vacant businesses downtown. I don't even know how we get revenue off of those. Um, but I'm sure that, you know, on a pawn broker, if they sell something, they charge taxes and we get some, some revenue from those. So um, and and again, my, sorry for being, I don't know how we make any money off of a payday lender. Um, and you don't have to enlighten me right now. Maybe I could take some time on my own and research that, but um, I would be interested in to understand why pawn brokers and precious metal dealers are in, looped into that same category.
And we've had a pawn broker in town for years.
And he moved from downtown to where he's at now.
And it, you know, it's the same family that's been there for many years.
Yeah, and and I see people, like, I guess to my point, I see people go in there shopping. I myself go in there sometimes when I want like a power tool that I don't want to spend a whole lot of money on, that I'm not going to use a whole lot, I'll go buy one there. Um, but I'm not going for a loan all the time. I'm actually going to buy things and you know, I know people that just go shopping at pawn shops, going from pawn shop to pawn shop to see what they can find. So um, I don't know, I I just, again, I I have a hard time understanding why, why that and precious metals is looped into a payday lender.
Because it's an alternative. That's all the same. It's just an alternative way for money exchange. So if you get a precious metals dealer, it is a jeweler because you're exchanging paper money for real money. So it's a financial institution and then.
But it's more than that.
It is more than that. It is, but.
I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's a good discussion. We can look further into it and see whether we can differentiate, differentiate those.
Yeah. But the, like, I agree with Keith on that. That, I think it's a trap and I don't think the only time you're making money off a payday lender is when they actually get the cash in, when somebody doesn't pay up and they get to keep either the the car or the check or, you know, whatever, and we make money off the interest, which isn't going to be a ton, so.
Yeah, we, we can tailor this um definition uh of alternative finance institution to, you know, remove pawn broker, remove precious metals there and then. And then it would just remain payday lender, mu- motor vehicle title lender and check cashing primary use or check cashing institution. We can tailor this definition for Benton or meeting Benton's needs for sure.
Well, Jack, um, Jack, that was right across the street from um, the Dogwood. Uh, he's gone now, but that's, he he uh, bought jewelry and sold. Um, help me.
I think all jewelers do. I think, you know, to Blacksburg, they, that's what they do. They they'll buy gold and and turn it into something and and either sell it or or something like that. So I don't know, I just, again, thanks, Nathan, for looking into that.
I agree with the check cash and motor vehicle ten uh, and payday lender. We do not want those downtown. The other two, we may need, we need to look at them differently.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a it's a good conversation. Yeah, this, we'll definitely look look into that and we can tailor it to um, meet Benton's needs. Because I'm glad we have these conversations. It's good to be able to put, you know, everything out and then cut things away at things and everything. Uh, the next thing would be uh, research and development facilities. The reason we added this is because we've had you know, in the technology era, uh, especially with like alternative energy and um, electronics, everything. You know, sometimes there's businesses that they're not industrial because they're not, you know, uh, producing in an industrial way, but they're also not your your cake shop, but they are working on, you know, like small solar panels and doing research and development, but we we did want to develop a way to allow these type of innovative businesses to exist in our downtown and GB district. And uh, like this comment said, this type of facility tends to provide for higher paying jobs. Um, and it's good for downtown hospitality, but it's just something we wanted to add because it was that weird gray area where you were if you did too much, you would consider industrial, you wouldn't meet that uh, intent of that district, but if you did, you know, you're you're you weren't just baking cakes in in an oven, but you're actually like doing things with electronics. So we wanted to add that research and development facility. And, you know, there's other examples for what would meet would meet that. We have developed a definition that would encompass that.
Well, you have had pieces like that. You've had the people across the street there from the Cargill plant, other side of the railroad tracks that built buses uh, for uh, musicians to tour in. Uh, you had a guy over there that works with antique cars in the warehouse right up the street. So there there is some of that over there. You may not look at it as that way, but that's been over there. In that area.
Yeah, I'm, the the one that near Cargill, those are zone industrial. And this one, like Nathan said, you know, as far as there are some sometimes I use that is more like a research and development that we should, we might want to consider to be permitted in GB and CB. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we have, we strike a balance to make sure that it not become industrial. Having said that, you know, as far as in the CB, we may allow it by special use permit. This is something that we would like to look further into.
Well, you can control it if you've got, you you have the ability to control it with the with the special, special use permit.
Yeah, um, so just thinking outside a little bit, what is like um, in the health department, wouldn't the gauntlet be considered a research and development facility?
Yeah, potentially. That's a good example. You know, if someone was working on like motherboards or doing other things, like this definition matches a little better, where it's not mass production, but it's technology into fields, really doing like GIS and video technology and other things like that. And the big thing is that as long as they don't, you know, cause any outdoor odor, dust, noise or impact on their neighbors, we don't see why they shouldn't be allowed by right.
Well, I think that does lead to, you know, higher paying jobs. Um, you know, um, a lot of people visiting our, you know, those workers visiting our our restaurants and things that breaks and stuff down, creating a lot of walkability downtown Benton. Um, when you have, I guess you could call that office um, folks as well, working. Um, you know, they have to go somewhere to eat and things like that, so um, I don't know why we wouldn't want anything like this within our downtown.
All right, if there's any more comments, uh, the big use, this is uh, uh, concerning, you know, our four-legged friends, um, is pet daycare facilities and there's going to be two rules with in the zoning ordinance, what's being proposed is if they have outdoor components and indoor components. If it was indoor components, uh, that means it's soundproof facility, it's gonna be different than if they have outdoor play areas and pens and training areas. Um, uh, one thing I wanted to to cover is um, some of the standards they would have to meet in the GB and CB uh, districts. So it's not that these would be uh, these kind of uses in certain districts would be required by special use permit or by right, but if they are being permitted uh, by right, they do have to meet these rules. And we have been, we've been getting different feedback um, on these rules and except there, there are definitely some that need to be tailored or maybe uh, removed, but one was that no more than fifteen animals should be outside at any given time at once. Um, you think someone's training an animal, fifteen fifteen animals or dogs out into a field, it's hard to manage. Um, and then in terms of, this is what was made for noise, but none of these facilities with outdoor components uh, should be within three hundred feet of residency zone district. Uh, did we did do the research on the existing facilities that have dogs? And they wouldn't have to be grandfathered in, they would meet that three hundred foot rule. Um, so it would be for like new type of facilities. Uh, outdoor players should be screened and the play and training and exercise should only between the curbing dawn and dusk. And then we do allow in this provision to for overnight overnight boarding. Um, that would only constitute twenty five percent of the gross floor area of the facility. But that could also be altered to twenty five percent because buildings and warehouses and stuff are all different. But if it is overnight, they should be in a soundproof building. Um, but these are the provisions in terms of of, you know, facilities, we call them pet daycare facilities, but then the with the rules are going to be followed as an animal related facility. So even a vet, if a veterinary hospital had an outdoor play area um, and GB would require a special use permit. Uh, if it was completely enclosed, it would um, be by right. And in CB would be by right, but if it was a pet grooming, pet shop or pet daycare facility without outside runs and everything, GB, they would be special use and then M one and two to be by right. But regardless of, you know, where they're at, and if they're permitted by right or by special use permit, they would have to meet these five rules. It could be changed depending on what the planning commission sees fit.
Is there anything related to this kind of business that has to do with water runoff or odor, to be honest? Um, just so we're making sure that the businesses are picking up pet waste, making sure it's not running off into streams.
Of just, I mean, for that uh, fill of dreams, we put it in the zoning permit that they have to pick up after their waste and then to make sure that, you know, they minimize as far as, because there is a, um, what you call it, out, it's not stream, but there's open drainage there. So they are aware of that and then also, you know, because of the stormwater requirement, they are, they are to pick up after the pet. As one of the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
But we feel this this use is definitely going to become more and more popular uh, as the years go go by and pet ownership continues to increase. This ordinance was actually pulled from a place in um, near Colorado. That that they had, you know, a skyrocket and they uh, pet daycare facilities and they needed to develop a zoning ordinance that worked for them. The three hundred feet rules based off of noise, a dog's bark actually travels up to three hundred feet. Actually, it kind of tapers off before there. So we wanted to be, we wanted to hear any kind of barking uh, even if it's during like training activities and stuff, when someone's, you know, living in their house, or even if it's a residential uh, or even residential business as well, because we have single families in that district as well. Um, the final use to cover tonight would be so we've we've covered uh, the large format in the past year and then of course breweries and stories, they're actually currently allowed anyway, but this is actually giving them a specific definition. Um, and then mixed use, there's currently this uh, provision or current ordinance that if you have like a commercial property and you want to convert the portion of it to apartments or residential use that you can, it can only be twice as much uh, as the commercial use. Uh, with the push towards mixed use development, we want to remove that provision. So you can have as many apartments or residential areas as you want in a mixed use building, you know. It's the whole idea of having a first floor commercial like a coffee shop or uh, other things that have an apartments above, but we don't believe it's it's necessary to add a restriction on how much floor space can be dedicated to residential use in the building.
Does that include the first floor, Nathan? Or did you say that the first floor has to be used as commercial?
I didn't have to, but it it there used to be a rule about, um, let me, let me check one more time, just so I don't say uh, correctly.
Under our current uh, ordinance, in the GB, he has the first floor, the the residential has to be either behind or above of the commercial area.
Yeah, so is what we're doing here is we want to change that to allow like.
We want to change, yeah, we want to basically increase the residential use. Because right now, under our current ordinance, cannot be more than twice, cannot be more than twice of the commercial use. So in that, you know, in which is limiting the residential use, we want to incentivize the residential use in GB and CB as, you know, above first floor.
Yeah, and I spoke I spoke incorrectly. Uh, second, the the commercial use, the residence uses cannot, they would have to be above the first floor or to the rear of the of the building. It wouldn't be in the first floor at the front.
Okay, and we're not, we don't want to change that, right? We want to leave that. Increase from double to maybe, you know, a third is commercial, the rest of it is residential.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, all right, good, yeah. I was understanding that we were going to allow the whole thing to be residential and that didn't, we wouldn't want that.
Yeah, and this kind of coincides with our, the increase of building heights in CB. Um, the forty five feet, if we have more stories, you know, if there's going to be commercial use in the first floor, we wouldn't want to limit them at a residential in the second, third. So now second and third uh, potentially fourth, you know, would be able to be residential with the first floor being a commercial use.
Gotcha. I like that. I think that's good. More people live in downtown. Or in Benton period.
Exactly. So that that's the, that covers the staff, uh, or covers the surveys from the public uh, for this evening.
Great. Any questions or um, comments from commissioners or to staff or?
Nathan, Nathan, as usual, you've done a great job putting together these surveys, putting them in a uh, in a neat format that's um, easy to understand. And appreciate all the work that you've done, even though we haven't been with you for, seems like forever. And uh, it just shows that you're still down there working away. We just don't get to see you.
Yeah, we're all a team here. Anita, Julie and I, so we're working hard to get with all uh, all these things together and hopefully get to see y'all again in in the flesh one day.
Yeah, we can eat.
Sounds good.
So, and Tyler, we're glad to have you join us.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Uh, yeah, I will say with all of the, to to piggyback on um, Dave, uh, you know, even during this pandemic, uh, we have, the town has continued to move forward at a rapid pace versus the rest of, you know, our our localities around us versus, you know, throughout the US. I mean, you know, Benton has this, just, we are knocking it out of the park here. Um, and when that happens, um, you three stay really busy, uh, along with the other staff in the town of Benton. So um, today's point, we know that, you know, the pandemic has made us all work from home, which kind of creates a a little, a different um, more adversities working from home and distractions and things like that, but um, and most people aren't as busy working from home, but you guys, I know, have stayed really busy uh, and haven't gotten a break, period. And that's a good thing for our town, but I do appreciate all the hard work that that you guys do uh, day in and day out to make sure that our town continues to move forward at the rapid pace that it is, and it looks amazing. So can't wait to see what else we all do together in the future. And we get together and eat.
Do that, Keith.
Any other comments or, any other comments or questions um, for staff? If not, um, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second.
Second.
All right. All right. Well, with that, um, you may turn off your iPads and enjoy the night. Thanks for the meeting, everyone. Julie.
Thank you. Have a good. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, you all.
Thank you.